Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that the current -- oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? All right. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that the current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. The purpose of this meeting is to receive an update from staff regarding assessment. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Juarez.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Teelin.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Foll.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. Moving on to Item D, New and Miscellaneous Business. Item D1A, Evidence of Improvement Assessment. The speaker is Mr. Scott Schmidt-Bonney.
Thank you. Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of our board, Superintendent Ray, guests, others, thank you, those visiting here in person and at home. I'll start by introducing the team in order of appearance tonight. We have Dr. Janet Zom, our Instructional Research Coordinator, Ms. Melissa Schroeder, our District Assessment Coordinator, someone who probably needs no introduction these days, Chief Suzanne Kramer, our Chief of the Department of Accountability and School Improvement, and I'm Scott Schmidt-Bonney, the Executive Director of the Research Division. Assessment provides one answer to the question, how are our students doing academically? And some of our assessments answer this question by comparing the results of our students to the level across the country. And these are our normative assessments, and we'll get much deeper into these. Still others answer this question by comparing our students against a performance criteria or criterion, as we call them in criterion-based assessments. And these are things like state learning standards, or as is the case for ELPA 21, standards for the acquisition of the English language by our English language learners. So assessments kind of start filling in the picture of how are our students doing, at least from an academic standpoint, and at least based on standardized assessments. There are many ways to exemplify the great performance of our students. These assessments and others create what we call a balanced assessment system, where from the classroom to the boardroom, everyone has the data they need to inform their efforts. Tonight's presentation marks the start of a season of assessment results, if you will. And in some ways is a continuation on Chief Kramer's presentation from August. We'll be back in as early as October with some results from our MAP assessments, then once the embargo is lifted for state assessment results and ELPA 21 results, we'll be back with some summative results, likely November-December timeframe. And so this is the first step, and tonight we'll just provide some overview and understanding of what these assessment measures. As I said, this builds really on the presentation provided in August by Chief Kramer, really focusing on alignment. And in our focus on alignment, we know that by focusing staff on critical performance indicators, specific ones, we allow them to grow deeper understanding. This is why you see assessment results used for school improvement goals, superintendent goals, and our strategic plan of action goals. These assessments provide some of the what we want students to take away from our district when they graduate, and the how is provided by our instructional framework and adhering to our core values as a district. On August 21st, Chief Kramer presented information regarding our next steps in aligning continuous improvement and accreditation. Assessment results provide quantitative evidence of monitoring improvement and impact for both schools and the strategic plan. Effective school systems measure student performance of the fours and of learning, and use data to inform next steps for instruction and support. This presentation, along with analyzed data and the supports we provide schools for use in leveraging their assessment data for improvement, will serve as evidence that our system regularly uses assessment data gathered through formal and informal methods to determine learners' progress, as expected in Cognia's Performance Standard Number 30. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Zom, who will take us deeper into our content for this evening. Thank you.
A balanced assessment system is an essential component of effective schools. In maintaining this system, we look at feedback that's collected, as well as the changes and determine needs that have been identified by a variety of sources, including schools, the district, and the state. Assessment data is utilized for three purposes. Data is used to help us measure student achievement. This information is provided to parents so that they understand how their child is performing related to the curriculum standards. Teachers use assessment data to make decisions regarding their instructional practices in order to better meet student needs. The third purpose of assessment data is to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of our curriculum and instructional practices. As you know, the use of data is included in the values and norms of our strategic plan of action. We know that we are focused on equity when we routinely monitor student data for disproportionate outcomes and trends to take action. Additionally, we use real-time results to inform instruction. In developing leaders and leadership teams, we provide professional learning opportunities regarding data use, as well as many leaders and members of their leadership teams have been academic data representatives, or ADRs, which we will talk about more in a minute. We know we are focused on accountability when we use common metrics to measure successes and opportunities for improvement, and we celebrate our accomplishments together as a part of joy. So in the Omaha Public Schools, we have a balanced assessment system, and there are three types of data that we have included in this system. We have formative data, which is taking place during learning, and they're also known as assessments for learning. Interim assessments are those assessments that are given at a certain interval or point of time in learning. And summative assessments take place at the end of learning, and they're also known as assessments of learning. If we look at these a little more closely, we understand that formative assessments are assessments for learning, as I mentioned, and they're to help teachers adjust their instruction by providing insight into what skills and concepts students understand or need more practice with. Examples of these are checks for understanding, quizzes, exit tickets, thumbs up, thumbs down, those kinds of things. Interim assessments happen at selected points of time during the year and are used to measure student learning and inform instruction. An example of our interim assessment is MAPGrowth. Summit of assessments occur at the end of learning, and this can be at the end of a unit, or a semester, or at the end of the year, and one example is NSCAS. When we take a look at these different types of assessments, there are different data types that play into the use of those assessments. And so if we look at multiple types of data, this leads to a more comprehensive view of what is happening. The diagram that we have on the slide depicts four types of categories that data can fall into: demographics, perceptions, student learning, and school processes. Demographics, of course, include enrollment, attendance, and race ethnicity as examples. Perception data provides us with information about beliefs about the learning environment. Student learning data includes formative interim and summative assessment data that was discussed earlier. And school processes data includes programmatic and process data of a school. One element for data provides us useful information. However, when we look at data across multiple categories, we get a clearer view of what is working and what needs to be improved, and how data elements relate to each other to impact results. If we want to get different results, we have to change the processes that create the current results. And if we only look at student achievement matters, then our focus is only on these results, and this does not give us all of the information that we need to get different results. When we consider multiple categories of data, we can gain new insight into student learning and how to improve it. As a reminder, information regarding the use of assessment data is included in Board policy, and an excerpt of that policy is presented on the slide. We use data to meet state standards, provide information regarding student progress, and to enhance school improvement planning, and also to improve instruction. So we utilize assessment results for continuous improvement, and we communicate these results in several ways. Parents receive individual student reports for NSCAS, MAP, and NSCAS ACT. Additionally, we compile annual board reports on assessment results, as well as presentations to district staff, including CIS leadership. Our academic data representatives that I mentioned earlier, or ADRs, are essential to using results for continuous improvement. Principals and program directors identify a person to serve as the ADR for each school and program. Two of the responsibilities of the ADRs include training staff to administer the assessments, and also to facilitate data use in the building. The research assessment staff provides professional learning to various groups, including ADRs, district staff, school leaders, teachers, parents, and community groups. Having staff, members, and families familiar with assessments and results contribute to student success. There are several ways to access data and data resources. Our research website includes many reports and a data book for each school, as well as a district data book. The purpose of the school data book is to gather the school's information that has been provided throughout the school year. Provide visual reference charts and graphs, and offer a one-stop source that pulls together a variety of school data, which includes demographics, achievement, discipline, and perception data. School data books contain school data with reference points to district and national comparisons when available. Interim and summative data is also displayed through a variety of charts and graphs that allow trend information comparison for student groups. The goal is to provide user-friendly data to school and district staff that can serve as a basis for analysis and discussion that in turn can facilitate data based on decision-making and can assist in the alignment of equitable resources for all students. Staff from the Research Division create the school data books to meet the needs of school and district staff as they work towards improving achievement for all students. Research Division staff has worked with school and district staff to facilitate the use of data books to inform the continuous improvements process. The district also has an assessment steering committee, and this committee helps to make sure that we have a balanced assessment system. We make sure that it's balanced in meeting our instructional needs and also accountability for the federal and state governments, and that our assessments give us information that inform all of our stakeholders, including students, families, educators, and community members. And we also make sure that it's the highest quality and yields valid and reliable results to inform our decision-making. This is a diagram of the improvement cycle, and this implementation occurs at grade level and also at class level. We start with planning, and so a school or the district, of course, with our strategic plan of action, teachers, classrooms, grade levels, look at this current situation when they're planning, and they identify a goal or a purpose based on a need, and they analyze possible causes and plan for action. When we go to the do cycle, it's when we're trying out the plan and implementing components of the plan. When we're checking, this is when we monitor outcomes to see how the plan is working, and by looking at the data and identifying areas of successes or areas that need improvement. The act cycle, or I'm sorry, the check cycle, is this component where we may adjust the goal, or change to the methods, or make what is working part of the regular practice through monitoring. And you'll notice that within the do cycle, we do have a smaller plan-do-check-act that happens continuously as we seek to improve. There are many reasons we collect data. Some are legal requirements, and some are accountability requirements. We have federal accountability requirements that we meet by giving ELPA 21 and NAEP. We have state accountability that is met when we give NSCAS. We also, as a part of Rule 10 for the state, we need to give an NRT, which MAPGrowth serves as our NRT for that component. We also collect data for the Nebraska Reading Improvement Act for ESSA and AQUEST, and also the learning community and MOIC for community groups. And now Melissa's going to talk about, more specifically, about our assessments.
Yes, so we will share a little bit more detail about our district interim assessment, and then also the summative assessments that are state-required. So our district interim assessment is MAPGrowth. The test is administered at grades K through nine for reading and math, and then in addition to that, at grades three through nine, we administer the science test. MAPGrowth is typically administered fall, winter, and spring. However, beginning with last year at grades three through eight, the spring administration has been replaced with NSCAS. So we're not double-testing students. It's important to know that this test is adaptive, which means that as students answer questions, the test adjusts the next question based on the student's response. So if the student answers a question correctly, the test provides a more challenging item next. If the student has difficulty with a question, the test provides a less challenging question. The test continues this way until the test finds the student's instructional level, which is actually where they're getting about 50% right and 50% wrong, and this is where the student is ready to learn. It's designed to provide information about the instructional readiness of students. This test is also unique in that it measures both achievement and growth. The MAPGrowth assessment uses an equal interval scale called the RIT scale. The RIT scale is used to show growth over time and is independent of grade level. The test uses national normative data. Grade level norms provide typical achievement and growth of students across the nation at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. School-level results are available the day after testing, and then our district and summary results are available after we close the test window. The next assessment is a summative assessment, and this is required by ESSA and Rule 15. Those laws state that districts must annually assess the English proficiency of all English learners. So all English learners, grades K through 12, are assessed with the ELPA assessment. The test is administered during February and March each year, and there are four domain tests measuring language acquisition: speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Students will get an overall proficiency level, emerging, progressing, and proficient, and these results are usually available in the summer. Again, just to mention, this is not a test of academic achievement, but rather a test of English language acquisition. Our next assessment is probably one that you've heard a lot about. This is the NSCAS assessment. It's important to know that NSCAS incorporates the NSCAS Growth, the NSCAS Alternate, and then also NSCAS ACT. For this slide, we'll focus on NSCAS Growth. This is our state-required general and alternate assessment. It is administered to grades three through eight and high school students, the alternate assessment at grade 11. This is a spring test administration, typically in April, for ELA, math, and science. Grades three through eight and 11 have to take the ELA and math, and then science is administered at grades five and eight, and to our alternate students at grade 11. It's important that you know that the NSCAS summative test does measure mastery of grade level standards. Students are provided with overall achievement levels, either developing, on track, or advanced, and we receive results by December 31st, following the spring assessment, and the results are provided by the district and sent home to parents. As I mentioned, high school has a different state-required test, and it's, we say grade 11, but it's actually students in the third-year cohort of high school. They're expected to participate in a college entrance exam, which is the NSCAS ACT, or they have to participate in the alternate assessment, if they qualify, as determined by their IEP. So the state legislature is the one that requires that state accountability testing at high school uses a college entrance exam, and ACT was selected by Nebraska as the exam to be administered to all public schools' third-year cohort students, and we have been administering ACT since the 2016-17 school year. ACT has subtests for English, reading, math, and science, and also in Nebraska, we take the writing assessment as part of our NSCAS ACT. The overall performance levels are developing, on track, and ACT benchmark. ACT mails individual reports directly home to students within eight weeks of testing, but official NSCAS ACT results for district and schools are available in August, but embargoed by NDE and cannot be shared until the public release of data later in the fall. Another district assessment that we administer here in Omaha Public Schools is for grade 10 students, we administer preACT. We do this in the fall, it's coming up in October, and this is similar to ACT in that it does include a subtest for English, reading, math, and science. PreACT provides ACT composite score range predictions, as well as individual scale score ranges by subject. And these results for district, school, and individual student reports are typically available within six weeks of testing, so usually by December, and the reports are sent to the district, and then the schools provide the individual student reports to As a reminder, a key component of the OPS learning framework is reflection and results. It details how assessment should be used for learning through feedback, data literacy, and self-reflection. Educators and students monitor learning in response to instruction to confirm, refine, or clarify misunderstandings, and identify opportunities for growth. Educators collect, analyze, communicate, and use multiple measures of data to continuously monitor and adjust all aspects of teaching and learning. Students are given regular opportunities to review their learning, the effectiveness Students are given regular opportunities to review their learning, the effectiveness of their learning strategies, and how their thinking and understanding may have changed, and how past learning experiences might influence future practices. We just wanted to remind you that, as Janet mentioned, we do report out to the board annually on our assessment results. And so, on the screen, you can see these are just samples of previous board reports for MAPGrowth, NSCAS Growth, and NSCAS ACT. And now, we are going to do a demo of the actual practice test for NSCAS, so that you can see what that looks like. So I'm first going to demonstrate on the screen, and you can follow along. And then after that, we're going to let you try to take a test on an iPad, just like the students do. So for NSCAS, they call the practice test the NSCAS Growth Item Type Sampler. This is a web-based practice test. Students can access it through the app or directly online, so parents can access this as well. I'm going to go ahead and walk you through what it looks like on a computer screen. And so, I'm going to go directly to the website where they have the web-based practice test. They do call the practice test the Item Sampler. And so, one of the things that's important to note is that the practice tests are there, the whole purpose is to provide opportunities to interact with test items, learn the format, and get familiar with how the computer tools work. It's not necessarily to show you the exact content that would be on a test. So when a student sees this, this is just like the app that they open when they actually do the test. We're going to go ahead and click on Item Type Sampler. And that's going to allow us to select a grade level. So students and parents have access to all of the different grade levels. We're going... Right, I'm going to demo first, and then they're going to do that afterwards. Just like with the kids, we want your attention on the screen, not playing with your iPad yet. So we have selected grade five, and we've selected ELA. So the students on the practice test can select any grade level to try to get familiar with the tools. We do request that teachers do these with their students. There's also tutorials, so they can get used to the tools. We're going to select English Language Arts, but you can see they have all of the subject areas. And then it does provide a language. Most of our students do test in English. However, we do have some students who qualify for native language accommodations, and we do have the test available in Spanish. So, of course, if a student is going to take the NSCAS Growth test in Spanish, we want them to be able to practice in Spanish as well. And then you're going to notice some accommodations here. For the practice test, you can turn on text-to-speech, because that allows students who are eligible to use text-to-speech to practice using that tool. I'm going to turn that on, so that you can see what that looks like and sounds like. And then, so once they go through this and make their selections, they go ahead and click on Take the Test. The system loads, and imagine all of the students doing this at once. We're lucky that we have good technology in our buildings. It does give students a chance to make sure that their text-to-speech and their audio's working. And it asks them, were you able to hear the text? I say yes. If no, it has them exit out and go back and check their tools. So this is what the Item Type Sampler looks like. We start the test by clicking on Next. You can also see that up at the top, we have a lot of tools. This is to test my speaker. This is if I want to turn on that text-to-speech. I can magnify the screen. I can do color overlays, like change the color of my text if I need that. And there's also a Help menu. We usually wait for the teacher's direction before they go ahead and continue the test. And now the test will begin. And what I want to point out here is additional tools that are up here. Students can use a line reader, which they can drag to help them read a paragraph if they want to. They can edit and markup answers if they want. They can also use the Answer Eliminator, so if they've identified that two of these answers are not, you know, definitely they ruled those out, they can use the Answer Eliminator and cross them out and help narrow their responses. So I'm going to go ahead and unclick that. You can see it's a pretty easy click-on and click-off. But here's a sample. There's a paragraph that they have to read, and then they have their test question, and they have to click on one of the answers. It's pretty easy to click on and click off, and then they'll go to the next question. And I just want to demo that there's a couple different types of items here. And I want you to see that, again, this is fifth grade, and see the amount of text that a student, the amount of scrolling that a student may need to do. So this one says, there's a Part A and a Part B. And so, they have to read the paragraph and then answer a Part A, and then they have to keep scrolling. Part B typically is asking them to justify their answer for Part A. So you can see that even though it's a computer, online, basically multiple-choice test, they've found ways to make the test a little bit more rigorous by asking kids to justify their answers. And so, if you didn't do the practice test, you wouldn't know, for some students, you saw that only Part A was on my screen. Students need to learn that they need to scroll down and see the entire test and all of the items. You'll also notice that you cannot go back on this test. You can only go forward. So you must answer the question and then go ahead and click to move forward. This is an example of a writing question that's testing some of the writing standards. And you may say, how are we going to test writing standards if students aren't writing something? But it's asking them about a persuasive essay, and so which source would most likely give the student relevant information? And so, there are all kinds of items related to all of the different standards that are tested on our NSCAS summative. Here's one asking about a first draft and what introductory sentence they might want to use. So if you're familiar with, like, you know, the six traits and learning about the writing process, these questions are aimed at trying to get at some of that writing process information. Here's an example of a typical passage that is testing reading comprehension and vocabulary. Notice, it's long, there's multiple paragraphs, the paragraphs are labeled with numbers. Sometimes the questions might direct them to a specific paragraph or sentence that they have to read. But these are long passages, and they are fiction, nonfiction, poetry, and prose. So there's all different types of formats that students have to be familiar with, being able to read and understand. And then they can select the answer. Again, if, sorry, if you haven't answered the question, like, you're supposed to pick two choices or something like that, it will ask you, pick another choice. And so, we'll see one of those in just a second. So it's asking about theme, asking about what is, which sentence best summarizes the story, and I'm just clicking, not what we want our students to do. But again, you'll see there's several questions tied to one passage. Students usually get about three to four passages per test. So, and then multiple questions will go with each passage. As I scroll down on this one, this one is an example of our drag-and-drop. So students can drag answer choices. You can drag them out back in the box. So it's very interactive on some of the items. Here's one where they have to select two different items. And here's one where it tells them to go look at paragraph three. And I'm just going to show you a couple of the other, for magnification, you can see that students can scroll, they can pan. In order to turn it off, if you turn it off and click on it again, it'll go back to the normal magnification of just 100%. The color that I mentioned is you can go ahead and change your background or whatever visually is going to help you. So sometimes we have students who have some type of learning disability or need visually something different. They're able to manipulate that. Another reason why we want students to use the practice tools, so they're not playing with this during the actual test. Here's another test item where you're clicking multiple answers and like filling out a chart. And then, I'm just going to click through the last ones really quick. Here's another Part A and Part B, because I want you to see what the student sees at the end. Please check that you've selected enough options. So I didn't select something that kind of will catch you, so that a student can't not answer an item. And then when we get to the end, it says, congratulations, you finished your test. Now, remember, students take, number one, they have to take the ELA and math, all students. And then, at grades five, eight, and 11, for the alternate, they also have to take the science. So those three different test administrations. It's important to know that the test is not timed, so students can have as much time as they need to take the test, which is nice. And the test can be stopped, and they can come back to it the next day to finish if they don't finish. So now, we are going to have you try this on the iPad. You will see a blue app, if yours isn't already open. I think on most of them, we tried to have it open to the actual test already. And so, we'll come around. Once you're here, you just click on Item Type Sampler. And feel free to play with the tools, try them out, and we'll walk around.
Couple more minutes, and then we'll display your results by board member on the board. Just one more. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I mean, and we saw on TV today that they showed those that are going in, New York Channel, have any language at all. Remember, that goes back to when we knew that they were in the trees before they came to us. That, so those people are coming now.
The bad is, those students have to take...
They can't.
They have to take NSCAS, they have to take all ACT.
They can't, it's ridiculous.
Nobody's exempt.
That's stupid, and then it punishes us in OPS, totally. So why aren't we rebelling? I'll rebel.
All right, as you finish up your practice test, I just wanted to mention that most of our tests now are online. And so, this one is NSCAS Growth. However, our students are using their iPads for MAPGrowth. ELPA is online as well. ACT has the option of online or paper pencil. Most of our schools still do paper pencil. But all of your students are now taking tests using their iPad. And just like we had a couple of situations with some low batteries and things like that, imagine what our teachers do in order to make testing very successful. Not only do they have to get kids familiar with the test, but they have to make sure that the technology is ready to go on the day of testing. Our IMS department does a great job of making sure our networks are working and our Wi-Fi is working. So online assessments have really changed what we do as classroom teachers as we work with students. But again, kids are using their iPads for a lot of things these days in the classroom, and so they are pretty familiar with using the iPads. All right, and before we wrap up, we'll take some questions. If people have questions about any of those assessments or anything in the presentation so far.
I have a couple questions. On page 11, there's a description of the academic data representatives, the ADRs. Is there one per elementary building, one per subject? What is that? Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure, there's one per building.
For the whole building?
For the whole building.
Whether it's an elementary school or a high school?
Right. So we have two elementary meetings, one middle school and one high school.
Okay. When you were talking about the data resources, I don't think you mentioned the research website, or if you did, I missed it. What is, what is that?
So on the research website, we have a variety of reports, like membership reports, attendance reports. That's also where we have the data books. So if you go to the district website and go to the research website, you can find a lot of data.
Okay, so the data books are in...
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. And who is on the assessment steering committee?
The assessment steering committee is comprised of a variety of people. So we have district staff, we have school staff, teachers. We have some community members. So a wide variety so that we can get a wide variety of feedback on assessments.
Is there just one committee or several based on subject or age level or something? Or is there just one committee?
Usually we start out as one committee and we kind of build some foundation about assessments. And then depending on what needs to be looked at, what the group kind of identifies, then sometimes there's a smaller group that might look at, let's say, an NRT or something like that.
And what is the size of that committee?
Usually it's pretty large. The assessment steering committee is large and that's why then we kind of break it down into smaller groups.
So who's the chair? Who manages this mob?
That would be me.
That would be you, okay. I have more questions, but Nancy apparently has one.
I don't especially know what I was gonna ask, but there was, I went back to the MAP Growth page and I didn't know what RIT meant until I was told. You know, I was reading that and it's the scale they talked about. It was the RIT, but I don't know that, we're used to using that and so that was not familiar to me. But, and I, I think that I was in a school when they were giving a test with their computers before, before I was back on the board again. And I remember that little bit of confusion in the classroom and some people had been absent. And then they stayed during the lunch hour to finish it up. And I remember all of that. But that's why it's important that we sometimes get out there and see what's happening because otherwise you don't even know what you're talking about for sure.
I have some more, is that okay? Can I finish up? Okay. I mean, if somebody else has something first. It was my, I'm looking at page, it would be the page before that one, page 14, I guess. Something about the state is changing. They recently changed their overall assessment. And I know that I had a conversation, and I suspect some of the other board members have as well, with a member, excuse me, of the Department of Education Board, who was very concerned that, you know, switching horses midstream, all of a sudden specifically OPS's test scores are gonna take a hit because it's a different test. Has that already happened? Is it not going to happen? Could you help me remember what she told me?
Oh, yes.
Sure, so for some time, we've been going down the road of a pilot with NDE and NWEA, the creators of the MAP Assessment. And they're trying to create, in many ways, what is the first in the nation effort to compare the adaptive nature of the MAP Assessment by providing, in addition to the great data we get from MAP, some of the summative understandings of how our students are performing against grade level proficiency standards. And so the real goal was to minimize testing as much as possible. We know testing's important, to understand where we're at, to help inform instruction, inform the system. But teaching is much, 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 much more important. And so it's about limiting the amount of time necessary to get that critical data. And so what the state was attempting to do, and it is still embarking on this, is to have at three different points of the year, our traditional seasons, fall, winter, and spring, an NSGAS Growth model that has elements much like MAP Growth that we have utilized for some number of years now and that are embedded in our system, while also then measuring that proficiency level against state standards. And so part of the test is adaptive to still provide that useful understanding at the student's grade level. And then some of those items are fixed to grade level items so that the state and MAP are able to see if the student, based on state standards, are at grade level. For the last couple of years, with the leadership changes, we've seen the state has allowed us to kind of have some flexibility in the model. And so the only required test currently this year, as it was last year, is the Spring Assessment. Now, last year, much like this year, we will take NSGAS Growth in spring. We'll take MAP Growth in the fall and the winter. And they're on a very common platform and often confuse MAP for NSGAS Growth now because it utilizes the same platform. But that third Spring Test, it is a different blueprint, if you will, a different kind of underpinning than those other two tests, regardless of if you're doing NSGAS Growth at those three times or MAP, MAP, NSGAS. Because it has to be constrained for those grade level items because they have to ask enough of them that they can feel reasonably assured that those results are valid and accurate. That was a very long answer to your question.
So ultimately, we're gonna be doing one or the other? Either MAP, I mean, we're gonna be doing NSGAS and MAP will go away? Is that what they're trying to accomplish? And do we imagine and do we anticipate there being an apparent hit in our scores because it's a different test?
Sure. So I think the goal would be, at some point in the future, that we wouldn't need MAP, at least for grades three through eight, that we would get the data we need for NSGAS Growth, from the NSGAS Growth system for those grade levels. And then we would still have the availability to test MAP Growth at K-2, nine, 10, as we currently are. And so I think that would be the goal, to reduce the amount of times testing occurs, to give more robust data to the state on proficiency as well as to us. I understand that currently, they're having some discussions with the new commissioners, new board members, new governor, about exactly what that will end up looking like and when we might start seeing, you know, things start to take off. It takes quite a while to build an assessment system, especially when there isn't a model to kind of follow after.
I have more, but Nancy can go.
What I would be concerned about as a teacher and as a parent for sure is that a lot of the results of these would be available in August. So what good is that gonna do anybody at all? The previous teacher, the children are over there, they're in another place. I wasn't able to beef it up and go back and teach it, and I don't like that. As a parent or as a teacher, I don't like it. I wanna know the results within two weeks. And I want them to be done before August. I mean, I wanna do them in May and get the results or even sooner. How are you going to make an improvement when you just dumped it all out there and they may not even be going to our schools the next year, et cetera? And we get in a new batch of children who haven't done it. It just doesn't make sense.
I certainly understand your perspective, Ms. Crackey. I think that's the criticality of a balanced system. So they have mu, the farther you get away from informing instruction, the more latency you see in getting back results. So NSGAS certainly can provide some useful information to a teacher, more so to a principal, and even more so to a district administrator. The most useful data from those formative assessments are available to teachers almost instantaneously, which is one of the real benefits of our one-to-one initiative in the district. And so the most useful data for them, we make sure is available immediately to them. For NSGAS and other of those higher level tests, your interim even with MAP, see the results of their students who tested this morning. We won't have a district level understanding till that window closes, but it's fairly quick. NSGAS, for a multitude of reasons, it's statewide test, hundreds of thousands of students. Often, like this summer, they have a standard-setting process where they review the cut scores and how proficient you have to be to proficient, be proficient, so to speak, how well you have to score to be identified as proficient or even advanced or on track or. So it can be a lengthy process, but I know they are very hopeful to speed that up so that we can have that information. You know, as we have articulation in April and the May time period, to have those conversations between staff about, hey, here's the students that I'm sending to you next year. Here's how they're doing and here's where they're really strong and here's some opportunities. It would be very useful to have that information to share. But we do have a significant amount of data from our balance system that does especially for instruction, provide that instantaneous feedback.
Ms. Morris?
Thank you. Okay, so I have a real minor question in that on this page of utilizing results for continuous improvement, on the data resources, you're saying that there is a district book. And when you say that, does that mean it's going to show me the results of every single school? Because I don't think I have ever seen that. I have gone on the system and looked for a particular school, but I don't know what you mean when you say a district book.
So we'll go to the website and show you where you can find the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Margot, if it's okay, we'll have Ms. Erdberger's question while we're pulling this up.
Yes, I have another one too, but go ahead.
You can go ahead and ask your second question if that works.
Okay, so my next question was about the English language proficiency and all English learners. So I'm trying to understand, how does a student end up in this group? I mean, obviously, I know that, I mean, that they speak a different foreign language right when they enter school. Those students are in there because they don't speak much English. I'm trying to understand who ends up in this group.
So the students that end up coded formally as English learners. When students are admitted to school, parents fill out a home language survey. And for anyone that marks on that that they do speak another language at home, students are screened using the ALPA screener. And based on the results of that ALPA screener, if they qualify, they're considered an English learner from that moment on. So they participate in a screener and then they are, they either qualify or they don't. And they remain an English learner until they pass that ALPA 21 test, the summative, until they score proficient on that.
Okay, so you said that there's a survey that's taken and identification is made that another language is spoken home, they speak at home. And then what was the other thing that you said after that? Then they take a what test?
They take, the ALPA summative that we take, it has a screener that is used to identify if you qualify as an English learner. So students, when they initially come in and if they are eligible or have marked on that home language survey, there's a process through our EL department where new students who come into our district, they are administered that screener. It's much quicker than the full ALPA 21 summative assessment that kids take in the spring. The screener is administered all year long. And based on the results of that, that designates whether they qualify as EL or don't qualify.
Okay, so my other question in regards to this then is, you mentioned in one of the slides that a student could take a test, for example, in Spanish. You mentioned that, okay? So are there other languages that students can take a test in also?
Typically, for the NSGAS Assessment, that's the only assessment that we can take in another language. NDE has a translated Spanish copy that we're able to do either online or paper pencil. For the other languages, the tests are not translated into those other languages. However, typically for students that are eligible, because it's not all students, students have to be eligible for native language accommodations. And that usually means they're a newcomer and it's within their first three years in the country. For languages that are not Spanish, we typically have to use translators for, like the English and the Spanish, they translate some of that for the students and a lot of that is one-on-one testing. And we use our bilingual liaisons and translators that we have who are trained in how to translate their specific process that they have to follow from NDE on what a translator can and can't do. And so students either take that in English or they use those other resources. But again, they have to qualify for that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Erdberger?
Thank you. Mr. Head, I was shaking my head and you were talking about the translators while I'm looking at the screen that says we have 107 languages. And I'm thinking to myself, how can anybody wonder why it costs more to educate kids in Omaha than every place else? Because we have to have bilingual translators and, anyway. Preaching to the choir. On page 18 about the ACT, it says that the levels are developing on track in ACT Benchmark. But the kids get their ACT number as well, right?
Sure. ACT sends a report from the vendor, from ACT directly home. And those are regular ACT scores with composite scores and subtest scores. Nebraska, for accountability, puts another layer of the NSGAS performance levels. And so we have a level for ELA, math, and science. And there are certain cut scores pretty much aligned to ACT college benchmarks. But Nebraska sets their own performance levels on what would be determined to be developing on track and college and career benchmark based on those ACT scores.
One of the other things that I was just wondering, if we have any way of tracking or building into our data for our own purposes, if nobody else's, is that, I know that when I used to be administering the ACT test because I was teaching when we went to the every 11th grader, which I thought was a great idea, I liked it a lot. But there were plenty of kids who are not planning on, I mean, they don't give a, what would the word be? Rat's ass, maybe? Something, no, that shouldn't be the word, something.
Probably not at a workshop.
Okay, not at a board meeting, but not at a workshop either.
Yeah, it's different.
Anyway, they don't care about the, how they do on the ACT. And it's a day to get through the test as quickly as possible, then put their head down on the table and sleep. Which, you know, knock yourself out, that's what your objective is. But I can't help but think it doesn't turn out very well in our scores because you have a class of kids that are taking the ACT because they wanna get a good score and get into college. And then you have another group of kids that are less, you know, they have other plans for their lives. Susan has managed to make sure that there are lots of other options that they might have, but they don't include doing well on the ACT. Do we, for our own purposes, have any way of tracking and connecting what kids do not have college plans so that we can sort of bifurcate or read our data based on that?
I'll let Scott talk in a second, but that's actually one of the questions that students have to fill out before they take the test. They have some self-reflection questions ahead of time. And so we do get that data self-reported from the students on that they do not have any plans. And staff use that data to say, hey, you scored really high, but you said you don't have any plans. Or you said you wanted to go to college, it's right here on, in the data, but your score is not where it needs to be, so what can we do? So there is some information directly in ACT, but Scott?
I would say you'd have to be very fleet of foot to leave the Omaha Public Schools without at least some form of plan for your future. Because for years, first, one of our student community services, school counselors, would chase you down. And now they're joined by their friends in the pathway in the academies to make sure, you know, from all of these vantage points, that our students are making those long-term plans. And they leave with at least a Plan A, if not a B and a C as well, should they have to fall back on those.
But I guess what I was referring to was... But I guess what I was referring to was those kids where A, B, and C do not involve using an ACT score. And what I was sort of thinking ahead to was the inevitable story in the World Herald where our students' ACT scores don't appear to hold up. And I was wondering if there's any data that says, of the kids going to college, these are what their ACT scores are. But that's not a piece of informa, and I'm not asking you to do it, but that's not a piece of information that we can track?
Only through the survey question and linked back to the items. And it would be hard to know if a student just wasn't engaging because they didn't have a plan to go to college. Or if we might agree with them and say, yeah, that score would suggest that maybe college isn't the best plan for you. So being able to trace that down is challenging, you know, it is a requirement. So what I generally tell students is, it's about keeping doors open. So it might not be currently in your plan to go to college. But with that ACT score, should you want to go to an institution that requires it, they have the benefit of having it now. For a disengaged student who doesn't have an intention of going to college, they may have some engagement challenges on that test. But I would say, since we started giving the ACT 11th grade, and this might go to your point or against, we have noted very good attendance on that day. So many students, it's generally one of our highest attended days for at least that grade level.
So and I'll follow up on that real quick. Because back in another life, I was the one who wrote the bill that replaced the 11th grade NSCAST with the college assessment, which became the ACT. And so the thought process and the theory behind it at the time was, if we're going to be required to take some sort of test to gather the, to gather the data, that the students at the time really didn't have a reason to care about the NSCAST at all. And so the ACT gave them, or any college assessment, whatever the department agrees with, gave them a reason to care. And obviously, not every student is going to feel the same way about it. Yep, yeah, so before, so before we changed it, there was a cohort of about 11 school districts that was doing the ACT for about the five years before it became the state standard. And there was a lot of great data coming back from those districts showing that there was increased engagement in the testing. So that was kind of the rationale behind it.
I was always a big fan of it until the World Har, Harold's story came out where we couldn't bifurcate. But no, thank you.
Yep, Ms. Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Head. So I understand that the MAP tests are nationally normed, is that correct? And NSCAST, I assume, isn't because it's a Nebraska-specific test. Are there practical implications for us of moving to a test that doesn't have that national norming?
So it's hard to speak about because it's kind of a conjoined reality now. To the extent that NSCAST growth and MAP growth, at least in spring, as such, currently for the last couple of years, it's trying to do both things. And so you do still have the MAP-aligned data that does provide that normative comparison, the percentile understanding, et cetera. But it's done with less adaptability to a certain extent. And moreover, with fewer items because of that holdout set that are on grade level that have to be asked to ascertain state proficiency. So all that to say, you still get the normative information. It does, we've analyzed results. Last year, we had, truly by accident, in some classrooms, they took both tests. They had already taken NSCAST growth and then they also took MAP growth. So we analyzed that data backwards, forwards, at night, during the day, and really identified a number of things. The precision is pretty good, I would say, generally. That's not a scientific term. But where we see it, I would say, impacting our results is more on the ELA side or the reading side, if you will, where it seems to have a mild constraining effect, lowering scores ever so slightly. And then on the mathematics side, you have the opposite reality where it seems to be providing a slow, and I'm talking one or two scale score points, so it's a very small difference. But that's on average. And there are a lot of realities on either side of the average. And so it's something we continue to monitor with the available data just to make sure that we understand what is validly and reliably being measured. So we know how much weight to put on that for our various decision-making. I wanted to go back to Ms. Juarez's question about the website. If we can just cover that real quick so we can close the loop.
Sure. So this is the research website. Went to departments and then research and then pulled this up. The school data, data books, sorry, are over here on the left-hand side. And we are still proofing the 2223 book, but that will be out there soon. So you can go to the data books and find any schools. Adams always gets picked on since they're first. But this is where you can find that information that we have out there for schools to use and publicly available data.
Okay, but there was a tab that said district, right, on that prior page?
Yes, and to answer your question, it's... It's not each individual school.
Right, it's all of them, right?
So it's, it's aggregate data. So it's looking at the district as a whole. So for example, enrollment by grade would be that top one, and then history, free and reduced lunch and so on.
Okay, so for this, for the district reports though, are we able to go back to prior years? I mean, what kind of timeframe do we have to look at this?
Yes, we look at trend data. So usually it's five years, three to five years is usually the trend that we portray.
I think, if I understand your question correctly, three years' worth of books will be displayed on our website. And decades of books are available upon request. We're trying to limit the clutter, the number of things, the number of reports. So if you don't, we don't want it to be that you click on a link and then 20 years' worth of data books show up and people may not be able to find what they want. And so we keep the last three years updated on the website. But like I said, any number of books are available at request. The last thing I'd say, you had mentioned earlier, as it related to the district data books, just having a listing of schools and their relative performance. That would be in the board report. So for the MAP board report, Appendix A, I think it is, has a full listing of all our schools and their results, be it the percent of students at the 50th percentile or meeting or exceeding growth goals. And we have a similar report for the board on NSCAST results that shows them by school with some trend data.
And I would add that there's five years of trend data indicated in the books.
So if I wanted to ask for more years of data, for example, if I wanted to look at eight years, then I'm going to request your department to provide, to provide that data? And I, will I be getting it in a spreadsheet or are the reports going to look like these?
If you wanted eight years, I would go back to the first book, which includes the five years prior to that. So between a couple of the books, you're going to have at least a couple decades of data. But otherwise, on the Data and Reports page, it does include my contact information. And we do get many, many requests. Typically, what we do is we will provide reporting. We have many years, as I said, of reporting. And so if folks have questions, that we have a report or a product like our data books that will meet that need, that is what we provide them to make sure they get the information as efficiently, as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Krackey.
I'm just going to ask the question. You say you have all of them. Do you have any of the gold books?
We might have a small treasure trove of gold books and any number of other books that we keep around mostly just to needle Mr. Head with.
And I pulled up a couple to show Mr. Head earlier in his career here. When we said that students have an idea today about what they're going to do, I want to disagree because my experience with the students in summer school, there could be 18 of them or something, and they give them cake and something afterward. And I talked to every single one of them and asked them, what are you going to do Monday? What are you going to do? And the parents thanked me because the students had no idea. I said, well, you're just not going to stay home on Monday, are you? Well, see, they, their ideas, they're done, they're going to sit home, nothing's going to happen. I said, so are you going to work? Are you going to go to school? What are you going to do? And I asked them, and I can assure you, from my experience, many of them, some are going to be a beautician, some have some plans, but most of them, they just shake their head. And I don't think it's necessarily just the summer school students. I think a lot of them graduate and they think, great, we're out of school now. And I think we need to do more preparation, more asking, more talking to them to get more information with them or give them more information about where their plan might be. I really am concerned about that with opiate students.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Head. A couple of my questions have been answered, so let me see here. Well, first of all, thanks for the presentation, let me thank you for that. And also thank you for the, taking the time to show us the actual test. That was really beneficial, especially for someone that's heard about the MAP test and the NSCAST from her own kids. It's kind of nice to see what it looks like and be able to maneuver it ourselves, so thank you for that. Okay, some of my questions were kind of answered, so let me see what I have left. I think you might have told us this, but I kind of missed it. The academic data representatives, the ADRs, you mentioned that is there one from each school that's designated? And I know in like high school, we have assistant principals that specialize in data. But typically, who is that person for, how is that person chosen and who is that person? Guess was my first question.
Okay, the, yes, each school has an academic data representative. And the principal usually selects that, that person based on their interest in data. At the high school level specifically, it might be a counselor, it might be a curriculum specialist, it might be an assistant principal, but there are a variety of roles.
But they, it's in collaboration with the principal?
Yes, so, right. So it's important that they take that information back. Principals are always invited to our, our meetings. And we have data retreats two times during the year, October and February, where principals and ADRs come to talk about data.
Great, thank you. My next question would be, I was thinking about, Ms. Erdnberger asked a couple of mine that had to deal with ACTs. But in, in listening to her, I'm getting the answers for her questions. Obviously, that junior day, students come, of course, they don't have to pay, there's no fee for the ACT. Would it be safe to say the students that do care, that actually are there to try to get a good score, is it safe to say that students, a lot of students, don't have to pay and take the test again to get a better score? That they can utilize the ACT day that we're providing, but then they can take it again, correct, for a charge, I believe?
That's correct. Well, and there are also some waiver opportunities for waiving the cost of that. They meet certain eligibility criteria like qualifying for free or reduced lunch. So really, it's important parents know that because if their, their student, you know, maybe gets a little bit of a surprise and says, this score's not that bad, but I'd like to up it a couple of points, qualify myself for some scholarships. Our counseling team through Student Community Services does a phenomenal job helping to support Saturday testing opportunities across our metro, at all of our high schools. And so they would have then that opportunity to take an additional ACT test with their whole senior year to build that score up a little bit higher and try to get a better score for themselves and more scholarship opportunities.
Excellent, that's what I wanted to hear. One other one, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but in thinking about how often we're testing, we're doing the MAP twice, we're doing the NSCAST. It, the test is not timed for students, and I can imagine that there's a lot of students that this takes days. I've always wanted to know this, does each school get a set time or block where their school is allotted to take like the MAP test? I'm just thinking, we don't do this all at once for every single elementary, or maybe we do. What is kind of the schedule so that the system doesn't get bogged down? Kind of always wanted to know how that timeframe is.
We provide the test window to the schools and then they determine how they're going to test. I would say that most students for both NSCAST and MAP usually don't take more than two test sessions. We've been using MAP for many years now, so people have gotten better at it. And it used to be, before we had iPads, people had to rotate classes through the computer lab. And testing lasted weeks and weeks and weeks. I would say, you know, it started during the pandemic, we continued to test during the pandemic. But since students have that one-to-one iPad, we've seen testing times go down because many people can test right in their classroom. And multiple grade levels can be testing on one day. So it actually saves instructional time because you can get testing done. And I would say, honestly, many of our schools do test all at once. A lot of them stagger, but a lot of our middle schools just schedule time allotments for, you know, the first two hours of the day. Everyone's going to take the reading test so that most people have time to finish. And we don't use 10 days for testing. And the internet and our wifi has been working. We do suggest that people try the practice test and make sure that your internet is working in your building. But we've had really, the last two years with our IMS team, just being able to troubleshoot and using iPads, we've had a lot of luck. But they do, some schools still do it one grade level at a time. They just have to test within the window.
That makes sense. And yeah, I can completely understand how the iPads have changed things. I mean, that was pretty user-friendly. I want my test to be scored because I think I did okay, third grade math. But yeah, I can see how that would really change, change the game for instructors that probably feel like it was taking quite a bit of time. My last question, and I don't, this is just one I kind of was thinking about as we were talking about these tests. Obviously, the MAP is national, the NSCAST is a state. How often are these tests changed, particularly like the Nebraska? Do they look at this and maybe rewrite it, take things out, make changes? Every five years, every seven years, is there a time on that?
It typically follows the schedule of when standards change, so there's a process for that. But even during a year when standards aren't changing, we've been very lucky that the state of Nebraska uses Nebraska teachers to help do item writing. And they're constantly adding items to the bank because items have to be field-tested prior to, you know, being put on the actual operational test. And the way they get all those field test items is they are maintaining a bank and they're continually having teachers come in and do bias review on the passages as well as doing the item writing. But the test formally changes or has to be realigned whenever we have a new set of standards. And then over the last couple of years, there's been different alignments because we moved to college and career-ready standards. But then also, we moved to this NSCAST growth assessment that they're trying to build. And we've had to align item banks from MAP and the state test item banks so that they can allow multiple items on a test. Since the nature of the new NSCAST growth test that people have been talking about is that it will be adaptive outside of grade level in the fall and winter. But then in the spring, it does have to stick fairly tight, like Scott described, to the grade level constraints because the spring is the only score that counts for accountability, that summative test. And so there, to answer your original question, yes, they're continually putting in, there hasn't been a huge revamp completely of, of the whole type of test since we moved basically from paper pencil. But some examples are those items you saw, which are drag and drop, or trying to get it more a rigorous way of answering a question that's still a multiple choice item. Some of those things have been slight changes over the years in, in the items. And that was based on standards, so.
Thank you much, that's all I've got. Thanks for being here, good presentation.
Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Head, thank you all for the wonderful presentation. The only question I have is, in order to access any of our assessments, do the iPads have to be in our district server?
So I opened your testing software automatically. But if, if you had had to have clicked on the app, it would have told you that your iPad is now locked. Those apps are considered lockdown browsers. So what it does is it locks it down so that during the test, students cannot access websites and things like that. And most of our online assessments do that. And most of our online assessments do that. If a person was wanting to access something like the practice test, the students could still access that using their app, but they can't log in. Everything has login information. That's a very secure test ticket when it comes to the real thing. So, yeah.
All right. So I've just got two questions real quick. So I was at Buffett this morning, early afternoon, and they were doing MAP testing. So I would imagine that's kind of getting the fall grade level baseline, if you will. And so then they'll take the test again in the winter and in the spring. When they take the same test in the winter and the spring, is it the same question bank? Obviously, since it's an adaptive test, it's never going to be, quote unquote, the same test. But is it the same question bank or is it completely different?
So when we take MAP growth, our kids start taking that in kindergarten. So they've been tracking that score since kindergarten. We mentioned the RIT score. That's the number that the students get as a score. So it might be 178. Well, you could have gotten a 178 if you were in second grade or eighth grade. So actually, the MAP test remembers where you left off, regardless if it was from spring or fall to winter. So it picks up where you left off the last time you tested, and then it adapts from there. So it could adapt above grade level or back down if you've lost ground. And so from fall, we test in September, and then we test again in January for winter. And then even our spring ENSCAS, the RIT score and percentiles from that test will populate into our MAP growth assessments.
There are thousands and thousands and thousands of items in the bank. So you're not likely to ever see the same item multiple times. But one of the benefits of the MAP system is with them giving millions of tests each year, they get very robust psychometric statistics on those items and their quality. And can then break it down and say, okay, is this a good item? Is it a bad item? Is one of the distractors maybe too good a distractor? Or none of the other ones are good enough? So the right answer kind of stands out. So they're constantly refining it. The test creation game is all about reliability and validity and constantly refining those items until they really hit that level of knowledge you're trying to measure.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. And then the other one, in your response to one of Ms. Cassidy's questions about the ACT, I got to thinking, and you really have no reason to know the answer to this question. So I'll be very impressed if you do. But you were talking about how, you know, if you're free and reduced lunch and a few other categories, you can qualify to either take the ACT for free or get a significant discount. I know there's a number of specifically federal government programs where, you know, eligibility is determined based on free and reduced lunch. But if you reside in the CEP district, everyone qualifies regardless of free and reduced status. Do we know if that would qualify everybody in the district for free or reduced-price ACT?
So for ACT, so it really varies on, you know, who you're engaging with. So if it's like a business or something, in fact, they get to write their own rules. As it relates to ACT, my understanding is you still have to provide some evidence that you personally qualify, even if you're in a CEP district. And in those instances, we have a letter, as I understand it, from our Nutrition Services Office that will kind of attest to the fact that you do meet those eligibility requirements. You can provide that to ACT. They have an upload ability for that as you're signing up for your next test. And that can qualify you for then a waiver.
Got it. But generally, then, if you're not free and reduced lunch eligible, just otherwise CEP eligible, you probably wouldn't qualify for this one specifically?
My understanding is not, that you would not.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Yeah, Ms. Juarez?
I just have a real quick one. I was trying to understand this term of what this meant, and somebody said it, and it triggered it. What is an exit ticket? What is meant by that term?
So sometimes during instruction, let's say in a middle school, before the students leave, a teacher might ask a question that students might write on a note card about something that they learned or some questions that they had remaining. And they call it an exit ticket so that they hand it to the teacher when they leave so that the teacher can kind of see what concepts may still need to be covered or what the student understands. You're welcome.
I kind of wanted to follow up on the ACT waiver thing. Sometimes students who qualify for or are enrolled in programs, college preparatory programs, they can qualify underneath that umbrella. So like, I've had kids at Urban League in Nebraska. You have Educational Talent Search, Upper Brown, College Possible. So if you're involved in a program like that, you can get a waiver underneath that umbrella.
Perfect. Any other questions, colleagues? All right. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you all for your thoughtful questions. And thanks to the team for all of their work in putting this together. We wanted to share our key takeaways, which are only two for this evening. A balanced assessment system that includes assessment of and assessment for learning is an important standard of effective schools, which we began talking about on August 21st, that common understanding of effective schools. And the second takeaway is that we use multiple assessments, multiple measures for checking progression, progress and measuring impact as part of our continuous improvement and within our strategic plan of action. And then our closing slide will be to just situate you in the learning and the engagement that you have upcoming. So October 16th, we'll be sharing our MAP results, our interim assessment results as an information item. We'll have a strategic plan update on October 30th, which will include some of these measures that we've talked about this evening. And then tentatively, on January 29th, we will be talking about evidence of quality teaching and learning and how our learning framework and our Elliot, which is evidence of classroom instruction within our continuous improvement system, we'll be talking about that. And then we'll be engaging you around accountability and strategic plan goals again on June 10th. So thank you so much for your time this evening and for being here.
Thank you. Any other questions before we adjourn? Ms. Ray?
I also thank the assessment team. You are experts in the field. You are credit to the organization and your help with the state, keeping our focus on assessment and our opinions relevant to the discussion. I also thank the Board of Education for their approval. I mean, the success of being able to do all this online with infrastructure improvements connected to the bond work that you approved, a lot of the technical information that you've approved with networking and closets and everything that you've done over the years to make it so we can do quick testing and all elementary schools can test at the same period. We've come a long way from some very frantic phone calls over the years about not being able to connect to running extension cords from computer labs to classrooms. So thank you, Board of Education, for your support in making a lot of this possible. And thanks again for showing up to the workshop and being a part of the discussion as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you, everyone, for being here. To the assessments team and the presenters tonight, thank you so much for being here. Let the record reflect that the board workshop adjourned at 7:33 PM.